Okay, it's six o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting to order.
I'll call the roll. Chairman Wykoff. Commissioner Gavahy.
Here.
Commissioner Dillon.
Here.
Commissioner Noble.
Here.
Commissioner Connolly. Commissioner Marr. And Commissioner LaRue.
Here.
So if we have any public comment on anything unrelated to today's meeting, if you wanna make a comment. No comments, we'll move on to the approval of last month's meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from last?
I would like to make a motion to approve February, a month of February's meeting.
I'll second.
I'll call the roll for approval of the minutes. Commissioner Gavahy.
Yes.
Commissioner Noble.
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly.
Yes.
Commissioner Dillon.
Yes.
Commissioner LaRue.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, first on the agenda tonight, we have Don's Dock site plan.
We'll read the quasi judicial procedure so we can get started. This is a quasi judicial proceeding wherein the planning commission acts in a quasi judicial rather than legislative capacity at a quasi judicial hearing. It is not the commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. At this time, I'll ask if any of the commissioners have had any ex parte communications with the applicant. Hearing none, I will ask if any of the commissioners have any conflicts of interest with the applicant. Hearing none, you may proceed.
Okay, so we have the city's presentation.
All right, yes, we have a short presentation. All right. So this is Don's Dock site plan. And here on the screen, it's section 110-47 of the Code of Ordinances. This just has a requirements of that major site plan review. So the technical review committee is staff. So staff has met with the applicant. And then the applicant has performed a neighborhood workshop. We've had, the technical review committee has reviewed the plans. And then we're at the stage where it's public hearing approval, and that's only by a planning commission. They also received a variance that I'll note later in this presentation, so they did have to go to the special magistrate as well. All right, so jumping to section 110-49 of the Code of Ordinances. This is just a planning commission review. So basically, when you're reviewing these plans, there are three things that you can find out of this. You can either approve the development order. You can approve the development order with comments, or you can deny. So those are the three options from this. All right, so the location of the project is down here on Boardwalk. It's 215 Boardwalk Place. It's right at the end here. And this is what it looks like in a street view currently. And so here are the architectural plans. I just chose a few of the sheets from the architectural plan showing the ground floor, first floor, and second floor. And there is the elevation as well. And then we also received civil plans as well as landscape plans. So going through the review criteria, which is section 110-48 of our code. The plan meets the submittal requirements of the land development code, which is payment of fee. It complies with the submittal schedules and provide adequate notice and review, so they met that requirement. Number two, the development is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the land development code and other applicable regulations. This plan met those requirements. And then we'll go through section 110-51, which is the scope of review for site plans. And this is basically what the staff review is in your packet. So it'll look very similar. So they met the proposed use. The lot restrictions. On the civil plan, they do have a site data table with the side yard setbacks. And one of the side yard setbacks should be five feet. I think it's 4.2, so that needs to change to five feet. Staff didn't see any issues of why that can't be met. And then just updating all the setbacks indicated on that site data table. Otherwise, all other requirements are met. Three, the arrangement of structures. Those walk-in coolers that you saw on the ground floor will be required to meet the Florida Building Code, land development regulations, and FEMA requirements. Number four, the impact of surrounding property. It's similar to adjacent property use. So it meets that requirement. Floodplain regulations. It meets the requirements with that variance that I mentioned before, and it's variance 2023-02. The parking. It meets all the parking requirements with that shared parking agreement. It meets the requirements of the traffic access. Eight, the protection of soil and water resources. The stormwater injury calculations are under review. Otherwise, it meets all other requirements. Number nine, the landscaping. Those are met, as well as tree protection. All the lighting will meet, must meet the land development regulations. The sidewalks, there are no sidewalks on the south side of Boardwalk Place. The sign, all future signage will have to meet the land development regulations. It's typical that we don't see this at the site plan review stage. Recreation areas, it's not applicable, as well as fences and walls. And there is an easement that's shown on the survey in the civil plans. And the docks and seawalls, we will require more information about the dead men and anchors in the plans. And this will be provided during the demolition, which is consistent with the construction practices. And the last two, the solid waste disposal containers. Public Works is still reviewing that, so that might slightly alter the location and size. It may be a little bigger than what's on the plans. And then the concurrency determination. All the concurrency research and reports required will be provided for the technical review committee prior to approval. So going back to that section 110-49 in the code on what the planning commission reviews in the outcomes, we are, staff is recommending that middle outcome of approval with conditions. So staff recommends the approval that the conditions that the applicant must meet all the requirements in that section 110-51, which includes the sides of the solid waste disposal and the side yard setback being five feet on that one side. And that is all I have for you.
So is it open discussion for us now, or do we hear from the?
You can ask questions of staff if you have any, or the applicant can present, and then you can ask questions of both. But applicant definitely needs an opportunity to present anything they wanna present.
Okay, so if the applicant would come up and state their?
I'm Bill Kearns, 101 150th Avenue, Madeira Beach. Been up here a couple of times before, so I see some familiar faces and some that I haven't had the opportunity to meet yet. We purchased this property about a year ago. It's been fuel dock and boat storage, you know, in the water. We've got about ten slips there. Wild Seafood has been running their charter boats to catch fish there for many years. Everything that you see on the ground floor today, there's a bunch of big ice coolers and that for them processing their catch. And when we begin construction on this, that operation's gonna cease. They've got another location up in Tarpon Springs that they're gonna be operating their fish out of, so. Our desire here is to build a beautiful waterfront restaurant. The design is open air. And people love to sit out there and watch the dolphins and look out at the islands. The food quality is gonna be a little higher end than what's there now. The building is, as you can see, is designed in a very Key West-type fashion, very suitable for John's Pass. We have kitchen in the existing building that's there. The structures that you see there are dining rooms and bars. And depending on that capacity, we either have it open on the second floor, which is now even with the boardwalk and, you know, the floor above. Hopefully, people are gonna love it there and love the views, and love the food, and come out and have a good time, and hopefully upstairs will be full too. So I've got my architect, Dennis Lang, with me here. And Sean Cashin from Gulf Coast Consulting, he's done the site work on it. Wanted to make sure we were prepared to answer any questions that you may have regarding the site. And I appreciate your consideration in this matter. Hopefully, I can leave here and go have a nice dinner and be happy about it. So thank you very much.
Okay, so do we have any questions or comments?
I have, I have one or two questions. That setback, that can, is that, can you meet that setback, or?
Yes.
Make it five?
Yeah, I believe you're talking from 4.9 to five, so.
Just wanna make sure that doesn't.
I think Dennis can compress an inch out of there to, or a couple inches to make sure, and we will meet that side yard setback, yes, sir.
And then the other question I have has to do with the FEMA. The, I know you're setting the floor at 12. But as far as the FEMA regulations and the freeboard, so are you going to floodproof the balance between 12 and 15?
Yes, and the reason for that, and why we went to the special magistrate and got a variance on that is we didn't want people to have to go from the boardwalk up two or three or four steps to get in. We felt that it's a much better design to be even with the boardwalk, and this is, as you go down there, at the end, at the east end, just about right where my building sits, it ramps up. It ramps up a couple of feet. So we're not down at the boardwalk level that you see all the way through the pass. We're up at that higher elevation, which I believe is two feet difference. And we did the design on the interior for the staff to go from the kitchen up into the dining room, or if they're going from the dining room, be down into the kitchen. And that's where we were able to gain a greater height there. So, yes, we have no problems meeting that requirement and floodproofing that area, because it's it's enclosed at that height, so we're good there.
I just feel this is a great addition, and that part of John's Pass does need some help, so I think with this improvement, we can, you know, bring John's Pass a notch above. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
I love the front side of the building.
Thank you very much. We do too. Are you talking about the water side or the street side?
And one out of three, you've hit the home run here. That said, can we dress up the backside of the building, so?
Which side would you refer to as the backside?
The top of the page.
The street side.
The street side. So in other words, when you're driving, because right now, when you build that building, you're gonna be able to see that from a good distance away, plus all the parking lots. It's all open.
Hopefully not forever.
I understand that, but in the meantime.
I understand.
Is there something you could add on, or just break up the squareness of the backside of the building?
And, yeah, the slide that you have up right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I consider that the street side, the backside of the building. The front side looks fantastic.
So Dennis can address that with some different fenestrations that we can add to the building.
One of the things that I would point out is that this is a rendering that's, it's a version of, that's in the plans right now, that we've also been considering some changes as we've gone through the design process for material selections that are gonna be reflected as we straighten out some of the lines. Specifically, as you kinda look at the piece that's on the left there, that's my elevator core. So the way that it looks a little unbalanced there at the top, we're working with the way to make that read more coherently as a structure, so that the gravity lines follow them down to the ground. We had some comments about the dumpster enclosure down low that are gonna help us straighten the line up and down through that piece. So the parts of that building that, to me, look a little unbalanced, to your words, we're working to fix those corrections. So when you look at this building at the end of the day, from the street side, it's gonna match the same coherence of balance that we've presented to the water side. And the same can be said for the edge that faces to the east, which you would also see from a lot of different angles around. So we are in consideration of those comments, and we are aware of that.
Is there any place you could possibly put four palm trees on the street side?
So if you look at our landscape plan, the elevations don't reflect any of the landscaping that is shown on the landscape plan, sir. The landscape plans do call for some landscaping along that edge, but it's very compressed between our building setbacks and the roadway frontage that exists right there. And then when you look at the existing site, it's almost entirely concrete, as is. So one of the things that we are doing as a part of this development is introducing new green spaces that are currently already hardscaped. So it is gonna soften that edge a little bit at the street side, and especially for pedestrian access and the way they see that process, is when we're done, it's not gonna be a building sitting on top of just a concrete pad. There's gonna be some green space between us in that experience.
Plus, when you go through that parking lot, there's a lot of utilities.
There is, and a lot of those things are parts of what we've been working with the city, and we know that there are bigger plans afoot for the John's Pass area. I know last month there was a big hearing about the big change to the code that's taking place for that area. A lot of those reasons for changing that density and intensity equation is in an effort to get a lot of these utilities undergrounded and regenerated. So that this is, this is the first piece in that big puzzle for us. And introducing an opportunity to redevelop at the boardwalk face, show the rest of the community that this is a viable opportunity that can be achieved. You know, and then we're gonna be doing that first part of taking utilities and cleaning up that far east end of the boardwalk. So when we're done, that way it looks kinda now, you know, with the fish, you know, taking place and the ice coolers and all that kinda just loose stuff on site, it's gonna get cleaned up to a larger extent. It's gonna look a lot more presentable in line with what we want the boardwalk to present for a lot of good reasons, both to the community and for our tourists alike. You know, it's gonna clean that experience up, and it's gonna, again, it's gonna coherently give that experience for everybody as we show it can be done.
I just wanna add to that. When you're referencing the parking lots, I own all of the parking lots that are across the street. And someday, we plan to develop there. But I can tell you, in the probably three years that we've owned that property, there's water lines that run from across the street in the parking lot. Water meters are all lined up along Fisherman's Alley. I've replaced five water lines now that are, my plumber says these are pipes that were put in back in the 40s that have literally, you spring a leak, you go to replace the pipe, you think maybe I gotta replace five feet, and then you go five feet, and it's rotten all out as you keep going down. So we've spent quite a bit of money to make sure, because the buildings on the boardwalk all need water. And that system that's there is so old, we've been replacing it A, so it wasn't leaking onto my parking lots, and B, to make sure my businesses that we own across on the boardwalk and all have water. You know, we own the Caddy's Building and the Scully's Building and, gosh, probably everything along the boardwalk other than a few properties. And, you know, important for our tenants to make sure that they have running water all the time, their operating businesses, they're all leased up. So very important for us to continue to maintain it until the day that we develop something on those parking lots, and then it'll all be torn up, and it'll all be brand new. So that's the long-term range. I think it's important that you know that before you make an approval for this.
My last question. Why another restaurant?
There's a variety. Think about what's down there. And, you know, we threw up a Fribada's Kitchen on the very east end, just to sell some pizzas there. There's, I don't know how many hundred businesses plus in the past. There's one pizzeria. There's ten ice cream stores. So, you know, variety, I think when you go to Bubba Gump's, and you go to Hooters, and you go, and I get the lobster roll at Boardwalk once a week. Great lobster roll at Boardwalk Grill. So, you know, I'm there and I eat at those restaurants. And myself and my partners in the project, we wanna bring something that's just a level up as far as quality and diversity of food. You know, you go to Hooters, you get chicken wings and salads and stuff like that, you know? There is no higher-end restaurant that has better food, better quality. And I think if you bring something there at that location with those views from up there, and the food quality is at another level above what's currently there, I think not only the local community will get out and enjoy it, but certainly all of the tourists are gonna love to have another option down there for some quality food. So that's the answer for you.
Yeah, I think it's looking really nice, and I think it's gonna be a great addition coming to the pass, but I would like to see the street side, you know, be inviting as much as the boardwalk side, because it seems like everything else is just not as inviting for that. And then with the city, hopefully, they let you keep the character of the signs, and we've had many discussions with their new ordinance that, you know, you have to meet, like it's on Gulf Boulevard, but some of the character of John's Pass is the uniqueness and the over signage. And I know we've talked about it, but, you know, I'm a big agreement that I like the signs that are there now. And hopefully, we keep with the character of the other places, and they don't give you a hard time about the signage.
We'll meet all of the sign ordinances there. I just, a couple of things I'd like to add as you were going through things. So currently, as you go east of the the walkway to go up to the pass, if you go east, you see that little triangular shape parcel there. So currently, that's three parking spaces. When you talk about green space, and you talk about stormwater runoff to retain the inch of water roughly that we have to retain on the site, that first inch, that becomes another green space. It's gonna be a small retention pond there. And you can see the trees that are located along that side right there, those four trees that are there. When you talk about, Jenny, if you could go to the the street elevation, please? Or Al, or whoever's running the? Okay. So you notice the, I'll call them towers, even though they're not towers. I'll call, the stairwell, you see the stairwell on the right side, on that east side? That's a stairwell. Could I add a window into the stairwell? Sure, you know, you put some shutters on it, dress it up like that, that's not a problem. But right to the left, that's men's and women's restroom. So you've got those features that are there. Put them on the street side, because I certainly didn't wanna put them on the water side and block all the view. So that's what that, and that's done with, you know, hardy board siding, you know, it's a very wharf-looking building, you know, something that belongs on a wharf. And that's how I envision John's Pass. You go to the west end, that second tower there, that's the elevator tower. And a stairwell, I believe, is in there also? There's no stairwell there, just elevator. Okay, so that, what you're seeing there with all the hardy board siding going up, that's for the elevator. And, you know, that, I can't put any windows on, but could I put some fenestration or something to make that look more seaworthy, I'll say, you know? This is a waterfront, first-class restaurant that we're building there. That I'm positive, as I'm standing here, it's gonna be very well-received, especially from the local community.
And that's kinda what I was getting at, like maybe you can, like, dress it up with some signs. Because the ordinance is gonna be very limited on your signage, and I'm saying I think they should let you put more sign to make it look to be like all the rest of the businesses up and down the boardwalk and through, up all the way.
I'd like to take you up on that offer, that you kind of walk that through, the sign ordinance for me, Mike. I really appreciate you stepping up like that.
I've been pushing for everybody in the village, because they're not in compliance with their signs.
I understand.
And I think that's a big part of the character of the village, is that they got signs on pilings, they got signs on the wall, they got their business sign. And I like it like that, and I know it's kinda what I like, and someone else may like something different, but.
We're trying to retain.
I think signs would dress it up.
We're trying to retain the charm and character of the village. That's what we're trying to accomplish here. And I think Dennis and Sean, they've done an excellent job of getting us to where we're at. Is there room for improvement? Absolutely. Are my ears open? Always. So I like to think that.
I mean, if you came down on the right side and put a, right where the arrow is.
Yep. Yep.
And put a fake hip roof.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know if that, if, you know, like a, like an awning or a shutter or, or something. But I don't know, Jenny would know if we're able to, I think you can go three feet.
Yeah, you can go three feet.
You can go three feet with some type of overhang, just what you're saying. And, and we'd, we'd love to add some character.
Overhang doesn't have to do anything.
Right.
It's just visual.
Right.
You know, and then if you took the hardy board and framed out a window, even though it's not a window.
Yeah.
Just something to, because right now, it's just.
That's a stairwell. I mean, it could bring some light into that stairwell, so I wouldn't mind putting a window in there.
So there you go.
There's a bathroom.
Bathroom.
There's no stairs.
Yeah, this is a bathroom right here.
No, to the right of that little bit.
Yeah, this is the stairs right here.
Okay. Then is, so that's the two bathrooms.
The bathrooms are right here.
Second. So I don't know.
We can introduce architectural elements that are not real windows.
Yes.
I already heard, we heard that. I'll work to present a different version of the elevation.
In, in that bathroom, there couldn't be some type of window?
We'll work it out.
Getting yelled at.
We'd just like it to be the best it can be. For your sake.
That's what we want.
Also something that's already in process, so I, I.
That's why you get the big money, Dennis.
Couple big sharks there. Shark.
grouper. Grouper's on the wall.
We don't want to scare the customers with the big shark, Vito, but.
I remember that big, that big white shark that used to hang on the one building down the block. There used to be that giant fish right there.
You'll stop and take pictures?
So do we have any more questions for Mr. Kearns? I've got a couple for you, Bill. One, did I understand you that Don's dock is going to be going away or just a fish?
Just a fish operation. So what we have there now, we've, we've leased out the docks to Hubbard Family, to Dylan Hubbard. He's running the fuel operation for us and he's got a lease for all the slips out there. So currently, that's the situation there with, as far as the fuel, and that'll continue to run. And as far as the boat rental, you know, he's going to continue to do, you see he's got some of his Hubbard boats that are in there.
I think mostly that they're still going to have gas and shrimp there.
Yes.
As hell as you're going out to.
We're going to have bait and we're going to, what's going to go away are those big ice machine trailers. Some of them produce a ton of ice to fill up all of the charter boats that used to be in there for the fishing boats, for, for them to run out. So those will all be gone and.
Not all of them, though, right? I mean, because that's one of the things Don's dock does is ice, you know, ice.
Yeah. We're, we're still have ice, but it's going to be, it's going to be on the submerged land lease area where we've got some areas there to add. We don't need as much ice because we're not going to be processing, you know, they fill up those big vats full of grouper and snapper. And boy, I'll tell you, when those fishing boats come in, the people just gravitate on the, on the boardwalk because they are amazed at how many fish are coming in and they process them right there. They put them on ice, put them in those big vats and they ship them to all of the local restaurants. So that operation's going to continue, but not on this site. And, but we will have everything for, for boats to come up and get fuel and get bait and get ice and we'll have all that there. That, that, where they're currently selling the fish inside that building, that building isn't, it's kind of a unique building there because it doesn't sit on the upland. That building is built over the submerged land lease and you could never get a permit to put a structure up there again. So we want to maintain it. We want it to continue to sell fish out of there, you know, and, and serve the community.
So are we losing the fishmonger or no?
Are you losing what?
The fishmonger.
The fishmonger.
The guy that's selling fish.
Oh, no, Dylan's selling fish now and he's.
Going to stay there.
And that's going to still be there, yes, sir.
Oh, fantastic.
Yeah. You know, they have all their boats that go out.
Oh, yeah. I'm very familiar.
Other end and, and they're a great tenant. He does an excellent job.
It's clean.
With all the environmental issues that, that we have, we, we get inspected, we pass with flying colors. They're doing a great job. They've been servicing the waterfront for 50 years, that family. So we're very pleased with the relationship we have with them. And yes, we're going to continue and continue to sell fresh fish.
That's right.
All right.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I can't wait. When are you starting this?
Well, we're in the midst of doing a little modifications to the building, taking into consideration the things that you had. We've, it depends on the market, you know, interest rates are really high right now. We're going to borrow some money for a construction loan to build it, so we're navigating through all that. Myself, I'd like to start it tomorrow because at my age, I don't buy green bananas anymore. So I, I, I want to make sure that it gets going sooner, not later. I want to be there and enjoy it. I want to sit at the corner table on the, on the southeast side and, and look out at paradise and have a nice meal.
Okay, so if there's no more questions or comments from anybody?
Public, public comment.
Oh, public comment. Any other public comment?
We're, we're done, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You said it all. I mean, building. Bit of a building. 207, Portwood Place. This is a great, great idea, a great thing to be built there. I mean, we, we overdo this. Since Paul Stromich about that and extended dock there on the boardwalk, he was going to build, 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 and never did nothing to it. At least we got somebody that bought this property now and wanted to develop it. And that's a great thing for the east end of the boardwalk, actually. It's way overdue and I think it's going to do a great job. They can put a couple of grouper on the one side there on the street side, you know, and, and make it look nice. Don't got to put a window, glass is no good, you know, and people don't like glass. Something nautical, you know, they sell this beautiful fish out of copper or lumen or whatever you want to call it, and just put a couple there and you're done. Thank you very much.
So do we have any comments from the public, emails or anything?
No, we didn't receive any.
Okay. So then if there's no further comment, do I look for a motion to accept this?
I would like to make a motion to approve site plan 2024-1. I think we probably have only one condition, which would be the dumpster. I think that would need to be worked out.
And the setback.
The setback, I think they're going to meet.
Yes, yes, but I would.
Just in case.
Staff recommends that that would be in the motion, yes.
Yes. I'll second.
I'll call the role. Commissioner Gavahy.
Yes.
Commissioner Nobo.
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly.
Yes.
Commissioner Dillon.
Yes.
Commissioner LaRue.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Hey, so do we have? Thank you for all of your.
Thank you. Very exciting.
Do we have any old business to discuss?
I just had, well, I have something for number seven, staff presentation.
Well, we can move on to that then. If there's no old business, we'll move on to administration, administrative presentation.
Not really a presentation, but I, I just wanted to inform the planning commission that John's Pass Village Activity Center went to the county last month on the 20th. That was approved by the county. The activity center land use change, six to one, so that's great. And now the land use comes back to BOC for the second reading and final approval. So, and then that will be on the 13th of this month.
May I ask a question? Do you remember or do you know what the objection of that one person was?
They were asking about traffic studies, which were not required of us. I think that was the main concern. Also, the video is online. I can send you a link if you would like as well.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I had for just an update. Oh, last, one more thing, I almost forgot. We are moving forward with the master plan. If you watched the last BOC workshop, Kim Lee Horn did a presentation for the BOC. So we're hoping to work with them in the near future on the master plan. So y'all will be kept in the loop with that as well.
So then our next meeting is April 1st. Anybody had a problem with that? April fools?
Are you sure it will be a meeting?
We'll see. Okay, if that's it, then we join the meeting at 6:41.